...where it's going to order, provide the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Dave Campbell, Cassandra Goss, Larry Seer.
Here.
Vina Shade.
Here.
Mark Terry.
Here.
Aaron Wilson.
Here.
Bill Wilson.
Here.
Here in person, Fred. Anybody have anything they want to bring up for discussion? Go ahead. Please state your name and address, please.
My name's Kathy Wilson, and I live at 156 West Wall Street in Lewis Town, in the borough. But yesterday, I had a knock to my door in the morning, and when I opened my door crack, I saw was a police officer. The officer said, "Where's Bill?" And I closed the door, and I went back and I said, "Bill, there's a police officer out here, and he wants to talk to you." Bill did not want to talk to him. He did not, well, he didn't want to talk to, he didn't know who the officer was. He just wasn't dealing with it. So I went back out on the porch. Of course, I was in my nightgown, definitely had a bad head, really bad, but it was obvious from the moment I heard, "Where's Bill?", that the officer was confrontational, and I did not appreciate his tone of voice with me and telling me how this, how he was not going to be disrespected. I have never seen this officer before. I have never had a conversation with this officer. So I do not understand where the confrontational that was coming from, other than that he had mentioned that Bill had been confrontational, I guess, one of them. And, and I said to him, you know, "I understand that you were first, and you get what you give, and that's exactly how it is. I'm the same way. I'll deal with you until you're not nice with me anymore, and then I will be not as nice as you are to me. You don't do that." Besides this, this officer is in uniform. He was so unprofessional that obviously, he has some issues, and I'm not sure what his issues are with people, but he didn't know me from Adam, and had absolutely no right to talk to me about that, or about my husband. I wasn't there, didn't hear the conversation. I didn't need to know. He was there to hand a piece of paper because a drunk hit our van Friday night a week. There was a witness, and Bill had asked for a report. As of last Wednesday, we still didn't have a report that our insurance company wants, and he had made a call to find out where the report was. Now, my other concern about this is, this officer was not one of the responding officers the evening of the accident. There were two there. So all this officer did was take a message that a report was wanted, and a confrontation with my husband, and he obviously came there with the report in hand, and he came there wanting a confrontation. So I am not pleased with that at all. I don't expect to be treated that way. He didn't know me from Adam. He didn't even introduce himself as, "I'm Officer so-and-so from the Lewis Town Borough Police Department." When I opened that door, I didn't really understand what he wanted, but I will tell you that, you know, I'm just, I'm not happy with that. I pay a lot of taxes in this borough. Everybody does, but we have seven properties. We pay taxes on it. And I don't feel that the part of my tax money should go to be me being disrespected in the manner I was by this officer yesterday morning. So that's basically all I have to say. I, I feel that something this, this officer needs spoken to about that. Number one, you go to somebody's house, and you knock on their door, and it's obvious you caught them out of bed. You need to say at least who you are and why you were there. All he had to do, when he learned that my husband was not coming to the door to deal with anything that day, all he had to do was say, "Here's the paper that was requested," and turn around and leave. No, I was read pretty much a riot act over disrespect, how he's not going to be disrespected, and he didn't care if I was the President of the United States. Wow, he's flailing his arms in the air. So I didn't deserve that, and I'm here to tell you that that officer will never get back on my property. He won't. I don't care if we're being murdered. I'll take care of the situation myself before that officer ever knocks on my door again. So Chief, I'm just making you aware of, why would somebody be sent to our door with that type of an attitude?
A proper procedure would be to file a complaint with the supervisor or myself, and there is a procedure for that department. I didn't hear anything about it until today when it came to work. If you want to file a complaint, I mean, I even have the warrant with me tonight.
I will, I will.
So that's the procedure.
As a citizen, I was very much disrespected by an officer I didn't even know.
To be fair to everyone, that's why we do it this way. So you can make your complaint. We can do an investigation. We can decide what happened, see what the facts are, and go from there. We're not going to litigate this in a public meeting because it's not fair of the officer. He's not here to defend himself. There's nobody else here that can say this side of the story. So you can file a complaint, and we can look from there.
Thank you.
You okay with that, Kathy?
I will file the complaint, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And if need be, it will go higher.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure we turned it.
Oh, it might get turned in, but nothing will happen, but it will go higher again.
Anyone else have anything? Someone in the back there. State your name and address, please.
My name's Mark Canar. I live at 22 Sunset Road in Lewis Town, Pennsylvania. I was hoping not to be here tonight. I was here at the last meeting, and I was hoping some things would hopefully get accomplished, maybe. My problem is, first off, I'm a taxpayer. I've lived in Lewis Town for 15 years. I'm a taxpayer homeowner. I'm having problems in behind my home with a tenant who believes that there's a business operating in his home, okay? I have several pictures from the last meeting. Mr. Zimmerman was here, and he looked at the pictures and said, "Oh, my gosh, I wouldn't live there either." Now, since then, I've had no contact from, one contact tax-wise with Mr. Zimmerman. Mr. Fink was told from, that I contacted Detective Woods two months ago about this situation. Mr. Fink was supposed to contact me and give us an answer on whether that he is running a business in a commercial, in a residential area, and causing all kinds of disruptions within our community, and it's spreading now that way, okay? That's where it's going. It's going all the way to that end of our town, all right? If we continue to allow that to occur within our community, it's only going to continue to get worse heavy. I have several pictures that you'd like to look at, and that's continuing also, because now he's got adamant about making it even worse, okay? And I'm not the person to sit there and think that I'm a pain in the butt, but when you see it, something's got to stop here. Now, if you look at the pictures and you think it isn't a business, I'd like to know what you think it is, because there's a whole lot of other problems going on, and I can't factually say what they are. That takes this community and the people that operate this community to handle that and take care of it. We have a police force here, and I, you know, I respect that. The other night, we had somebody come by. I didn't respect him much, but that's beside the point. All I want to do is have you see that, and the people in this council, is see that it gets stopped, and I mean stopped, and it needs to be stopped soon, okay?
What, what exactly, what exactly is he doing? I mean, is he making noise?
He's working on cars. He's working on several cars. He's working on motorcycles. He's, he has been told to take the electricity out of the building, and am I correct? I think Mr. Bartik came out and made tour the second time, and he took it out of his, he took it out once into the basement, then he put it up into the second floor. And Mr. Bartik came by and told him again to get the, because he's plugging it in from the second-floor apartment building down into the garage.
It was my understanding that that was removed.
Well, that has been removed, but what I'm trying to explain to you is, if you don't stop this, it's going to be about a week, and it'll be back up in there. If you look and take a look inside the garage, that is not his hobby. I was told it's his hobby from the landlord, and I have that text. And told he's a good guy? Sorry, he's not, okay? So that's where I'm at. If it's, if it doesn't stop, I have to move my home, and I will move. But I'll also lose money on my home, because I can't tell people in behind my home of that stuff that's going on. I can't close my curtains and say, "Don't look. Well, what's going on over there? Don't worry about it. Put your kids in the backyard and see what happens the next month." So that's, that's where I'm at. Okay? And if you'd like to see the more pictures, and if you don't believe heavy that it's a business, I don't know what you're going to think it is, okay?
Well, I have a question for you. Does that guy have a real job?
No.
No. Where did he work at before?
From what I understand, Lewis Town, Line Country Automotive, and from what I understand, he was fired. Now, that's maybe beside the point also, okay? I know where the, we know where the facts are here, and the facts are, I've lived there 15 years. That's a residential quiet area with no problems whatsoever. I've never had a police ever come to my home for anything, and if they did, it was no problem being solving that. That's my problem. It was quiet for 15 years. Not anymore.
I, I don't see how he's doing a lot of work if he doesn't have power in there.
Well, it's all physical work. It's all detailing cars under the table. We have a borough councilman that's involved in this, and he's not here for the second month in a row, and I have questions for him.
I have a question for you.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Last time you guys were here, I think you mentioned that the noise.
Yes.
And I know that we do have ordinance that's noise-related. Is he making noises after that?
Sure, I'm sure he is.
Are you calling the police? Are you calling the police?
Are we calling the police?
I just wanted to know if there's a record.
I did the other day.
Okay, I just want to make sure that there's a paper trail that, you know, what he needed.
They're neighbors that are tired of it also.
I remember, I remember these guys. Okay.
Okay. What did the police say when they come down?
Uh, what did they say? It was pretty much, uh, well, the tenants were saying how we're harassing them, how they're harassing, you know, the harassment kind of thing. I haven't harassed anybody. I've been harassed. You can talk to Detective Woods how I've been harassed. That was two months ago. Told him be quiet, stay out of it. I have been. So I haven't said two words to him.
May I stand up and speak?
Absolutely. I know you guys are all in on the same complaint.
Yeah, you're, you're on the same subject.
Yes, yes, we are.
Yeah, okay.
My name is Victor Badunia, and I live at 18 Sunset Road. And we've had issues with this landlord since he took the property over. And his excuse to me over the last few years was, "These were tenants that I inherited. There's not much I can do for them." We had, we had a tenant that had a dog that was defecating on our property, and I was tired of picking up. I had physical limitations, and I can barely pick up my own dogs, refused, let alone someone else's. And he lied right to my face and said his dog didn't do it. I watched while his dog defecated. It was fall, and I could see the steam coming off the dog's crap.
This is the same person that's still there?
This person is still there. Now, there's a, there are a whole other tenants that he's filled every apartment except one. And I have to tell you, it's hell. It's hell.
What is the address of that?
Eight thirty-nine and eight forty-one South Main Street. It's never a nice, sleepy neighborhood. There's always noise out there. There were four cars out there at midnight last night.
Hey, have you just reiterate where he's trying to explain? It's old Pitts Apartments.
Oh, that's.
If you look at Pitts Apartments, and I'll bet if, if the police chief looks at Pitts Apartments, how many reports were called to those apartments, you'd be surprised. Because I've lived there 15 years, it's been more push toward me with this stuff, but it's always somebody coming over with somebody running through my home, running on parole.
They're on the, they're on the South Main Street address.
You got it.
According to my neighbor on the other side, they're having problems with these two properties for years. This, the police have been there two hundred times a week.
Yeah, they try to keep clean, but it's done.
Anyway, I went over last week to try to apologize to the woman who lives on the second floor. She lives right behind our yard, right behind the tennis court. And out came, what's his name?
Brad.
Brad Smeltz, who proceeded to rent me a new one. And then out came a buddy of his. I don't know his name. His name is John. He's not very intelligent. And he stood, I was right at the end of Mr. Canar's driveway, and he stood in my face, close enough that I could smell his breath, and harassed the crap out of me, and told me I was nothing but an effing fag, to go away, stop bothering them. I have no rights in the neighborhood. And I gotta tell you, I was pretty shaken by it. And I called, I called the police, and, and Officer Hartley responded. And I have to tell you, as soon as Officer Hartley got out of his vehicle, he had defensive behavior. He took a, a look at the flag in front of my house, which I put up the day after the Pulse massacre. Do you remember that? When 85 people were murdered in the nightclub, the flag went up then, and it's not coming down. He came and stood in front of me with defensive posture, then went over and spoke to a group of people behind us, who none of these people know what the truth even is.
This was the police officer?
Yes, Officer Hartley, and filed a formal complaint against him. He proceeded to come back up through Mr. Canar's yard and lay into me, and he said, "I have to come back here again. You both are getting citations." I said, "Both whom?" Me and the man across the street, or I believe his name is John. I don't know what his last name is. He does all the dirty work for Brad Smeltz, because Brad Smeltz has a long criminal history. He's also selling drugs off the property. I saw three drug deals go down one afternoon, all at the same time. Not lying. Anyway, Officer Hartley came back with defensive posture, standing with his legs spread, his arms folded. Now, as far as I'm concerned, this officer needs to grow a pair, and I was not going to take any crap from him. And he said, "If I come back, you both will be cited." I said, "I don't think so." And then he proceeded to threaten me, and he took off in his car. Now, I'm filing, I want a formal complaint against him.
And the proper procedure is to file a complaint.
And I'm sorry, you have counsel. This is not gonna.
This is not going to be litigated in a public meeting.
I know, but this is not going to end here.
If you're also an officer, you need to buy a lawyer.
This is not going to end here, and not going to end now, until the police learn how to deal with themselves and people. Thank you.
Very good.
I mean, the situation is unbearable, and the police only make it worse. Officer McLaughlin was no bad.
They're hearing your side of the story right now, but we do have body camera footage of that whole incident, and I'll show it to.
There've been three different officers over the past month. There was a female officer.
We're talking about this particular officer, since you named him in this public meeting, and he's not here to defend himself. Everybody's hearing your side of the story. There are two sides to every story. You know that. So.
I never want to raise the eyes on him again. I didn't tolerate being called these names when I was 16, and I don't tolerate it now when I'm 66.
You alleging the officer called you a name?
Absolutely.
What did he call you?
Absolutely harassed me. He said, "You have no right to bother these people."
What did he call you?
"We have no right to bother you people. Your kind should, your kind should, your kind should know better."
I'm not going to sit and argue with you and litigate this in a public meeting.
I'm telling you what he said. I'm not arguing with you.
If you want to file your complaint, put your details in there, and we will investigate.
These are facts.
But I can tell you, this is fact here, what's in this video, and they will get to see it.
So it's right there?
It's right here.
There's two sides to every story, and I wasn't wrong this time. I know how to change, I know how to change people.
It's all in the video. Everybody will get to see everything.
I've been in healthcare since 1973, and a nurse in 40 years. I know how to treat people. And if you quit to me, I'm wonderful to you, right? That's my philosophy.
My recollection, the first thing he asked you when he got there, was there a medical emergency, because.
I said, "No."
Yes.
And he insisted on calling an ambulance, and I'm not paying for that.
And he did call, uh.
I didn't need an ambulance.
He asked you to come and check you out.
I was fine.
So if you're going to give the story, give the whole story.
Yes, sir. I was fine until he started to harass me. And when he came back up through Mr. Canar's yard, I don't know whether they had words or not, but he definitely had an attitude. His face was bright red, and he led into me. This other person was face-to-face. Now, I don't know if he had COVID or not.
We're not going to go over this whole thing right now, but we'll get to the bottom of it. File your complaint, put your details in there. I'll be glad to meet with you anytime to discuss it further, but this is not the place and time to do that. We're involved discipline, and an officer has to be done correctly, not involved.
But the bottom line is, the situation has not really gotten any better. It's only getting out of hand. It's only getting worse.
If you, if you don't get any results after you file your, your written complaints, if you're not satisfied, can buy it to you again.
So you're not talking about that situation? You're not talking about the situation with the neighborhood and the noise?
Neighbors. I've put up tarps. We have a tennis court. Mrs. Steele lived there. She, she was a schoolteacher and an avid tennis player, and she, she died at 103. We bought the house after, who knows, through a probate, and we have a little size tennis court. Not that we, not that we play tennis, but we inherited it. It's my dog's play yard, and they have an issue with the dogs. They don't want my dogs out there. And that's too bad. If they don't like it, they can move. We're taxpayers. We pay a lot of money to live in this town, and what we get in return is very little. I paid $3,400 for my sidewalks. And after the winter, two, two aprons had sunk, so I had replaced those. So it cost me almost $3,500 to replace the sidewalk. We have no speed limit signs. We have no stop signs through the whole area. The mayor went through with the chief of police, I believe, about a year or two ago, and she called me back, and she said, "You were right. There's not one stop sign or one speed limit sign all through the developments up there." There's five stop signs right down at the hill. That's it. So the area could improve. There's a sign next to our yards that says Neighborhood Watch, and it's been there for a while. Well, I'm the Neighborhood Watch. I'm home 24/7. And I'm not business. I don't bother us all, and I don't want to be bothered either. So anything you can, please do to help us, okay?
Okay. Anyone else have anything they want to bring up?
If not.
Yes, I do.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I was waiting for anyone else.
I'll have the attorney folks come tomorrow.
I have an issue that is with tenants that are being evicted next to a building of mine, and don't know if anything can be done, but bring it out. There is garbage that has been out there for at least a month. I've talked to REX, and of course, the moratorium was supposed to be off January 31st. Now, it's been extended by the CDC. I don't know if anything can be done because of the eviction, but the garbage that's outside is an irritant to my tenants. And when is it that the health issues become an issue with my tenants? So that's what my statement is here. It's Brandon Allmiller's. If you look up at the, at the one balcony next to our building, you'll see garbage there. But if you go in the back, you'll see a whole lot more garbage. It's just out there.
Is this out of your business?
This is at Market Street. It would be 144 West Market, and the smell comes into my tenants' top market. And so they've complained. I have done what I could do with. So it's actually not sitting on the street, like they haven't put it out, and we can't open it up? No, that's all they need to do. But the landlord cannot do it, okay? Because all they have to say is, if the landlord comes and puts that on the street, then they could say, "Well, I had clothes in there," or "I had valuables in there," and they would have to pay for it. The tenants have to do it. I don't know if there's something REX can do to get this done, but if you, if you open up our gate and walk between, and you go back and look over, you'll see that REX. I only ask because I noticed there was trash in North Main Street there that the other owner had, that something had got into. And I know you can put your trash out early, but we can't do it three days.
When did you talk to REX, REX about this?
I talked to REX. Well, REX came and looked at it. It was a Monday. I'm going to say maybe the, I'm going to say maybe the 26th.
Of July?
Of July. Then I stopped back in to see what he had found out, you know, from calling the owners, and that, you know, he told me, you know, "There's not anything they can do." Until the 31st, which was, you know, that Saturday night. So then the CDC does what they want to do. So I don't know if there's something you can look up and see that you can come in through the borough, because the landlord can't do it. Yeah, the landlord, yeah. So, but it is a health issue at this point, so I'd appreciate anything.
Tim said he's going to talk to REX.
Okay, yeah, Tim is aware.
We'll try and get, we'll try and get straight that way.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have anything they want to bring before counsel?
Yeah, now's the time if you want to talk.
My question for answer, I just need a plate.
Okay.
Just step up there to the microphone, please. State your name and address.
Tyler Wyman, 3 East Third Street apartment. We live right across the street. Officer Chicolini has been harassing me for the past three months. Literally, every time he sees me, I get a citation for something. Yesterday, I was cited, I have the citation with me, for music in my car being obsessively loud. And it was not loud. It's in my Jeep, and I can play it right now on the volume. It was the one, you're already going to hear it outside the car. What had happened was, somebody made a police report where I was at at the time, 316 Valley St.,
14 Valley.
14 Valley Street, and I was out back, and I was helping him, and they had called the police for needles laying in the alleyway. But he didn't even go look at the needles. It was him and Callahan. I have no issues with Callahan. Like, I talk to Callahan all the time. But Chicolini came right up to me and said, "Mr. Wyman, is that your music that's playing?" I said, "That's my music, but it's not even that loud. You could barely even hear it. You could barely hear it in the car. You could ask Michael." And he, he came back with, "Well, you're going to get a citation in the mail." I said, "Okay, for what?" He said, "The," I forgot how to word it. It's written on here, "excessive noise from vehicle." I forget what I'm saying there. Like I said, my volume was only on level 12, and you could barely hear it. And he cited me for that, and then as I walked away while I was letting him fill out the citation, Michael was still standing close, and Callahan asked the Chicolini why he was citing me, and according to Michael, I didn't hear it, but Michael said he did. Chicolini said, "Well, Tyler and I don't get along, so I'm going to cite him for anything I possibly can."
And that's your say, so we can't, you know, we can't.
Contesting your citation, that needs to be taken to the magistrate's office to have a hearing. We can't do that here. If you're filed a complaint, that needs to be done formally on a written statement, and you can fill that out.
Okay, thank you.
So much.
Thank you. Well, it gives a lot of people hard work to do anyway. Anyone else have anything they want to bring before counsel? Yes, sir.
Michael Myers, 14 Valley Street apartment, 5. I have several sinkholes behind my building that I live in, and I've called the landlord. I've called Rex Finks multiple times throughout the two and a half months. Said he'll be out, come look, never look. Said he'd call me back, never called me back. I have six kids that I got to worry about with these sinkholes, and nothing's being done. Landlord ain't doing nothing, which is Cory and Samantha, and Rex Finks ain't doing nothing. I literally, there's two ways you could walk to go from out back of our place where we park, to go up to the front and walk up to our building. There's a sinkhole there where you walk, where the walkway is, is literally probably about two and a half, three feet from the back of the building where my room is. And then maybe about six feet from that, there's another sinkhole that you cannot see the bottom of it. And then on, there's a third sinkhole in the parking lot that Rex Finks came and looked at and said, "All right, he's going to review the blueprints and see what they can do." and said, "All right, he's gonna review the blueprints and see what they can do." And he measured it and it's four feet deep. And our vehicles are parked there. I literally have five vehicles.
What's your address, sir?
14 Valley Street apartment 5. Right there by Nick, Nick and Nick's parking shop. Because there's one where the parking lot is that looks like they tried to fix it, but no, no success. Then we got the one in the walkway. And then there's one where there's a condemned building where we keep hearing from Cory, "Oh, it's been balled out." No, it's not. It's been balled out. And nothing, nothing's being done. Like, I have to worry about six kids because they're all from 2, 3, 5, and 8. And then there's the needles. Ca- uh, Callahan picked them up, but that was it. And he said, "You're gonna give me a call back," and said, "Let me know what was going on." What was going to be done about it? Nothing.
Okay, leave, leave us, leave us get one rec, and then we'll see what we can get done for you.
All right. Because I'm getting told that apparently people from Lancaster owns back there. And then I'm getting told Manny, that's an Amish person, that's slash landlord, doesn't own nothing. But then we're, it's conflicting stories. He owns, he owns back there. He doesn't.
Who do you pay your rent to?
Manny owns the building. But Cory is like temporarily, you know, not temporarily, but like.
Like the manager?
Yeah. Like he, all the rent goes to him, but then it goes to Manny. And Manny doesn't show up for a couple of months at a time.
Okay. Got that down for Rex?
Yeah.
Okay, well, two we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have anything they want to discuss before counsel? Okay, we'll try and do what we can for you, folks. But, you know, like I said, if you don't get any results, come back. Let it, let us know or call me. My number's in the phone book. Give me a call.
A lot of comments were made about Rex and code enforcement. So I just want to let you know the borough manager Rex is on vacation this week. So I'll dig into this stuff myself. But we've also been talking about trying to get another person hired to work in that code office, too. So we're aware of that. He needs help.
Okay, if no one else has anything they want to bring up, we're gonna go ahead.
Can I add one thing, please?
Yes.
About the building that we live in, a couple of years ago, the roof did fly off. The, but it's, it's falling apart again. Got mold in the place, got roaches, all through the whole part of the building from top to bottom. And nobody's doing anything. Landlord's saying, "Oh, it's not my job. It's your responsibility." Yeah. And like, we finally got caught up on the rent. But still, it's the simple fact that the building's still falling apart. Roof is up front. If you look up front at the siding, you can see it's, the woods going, going to crap. Siding's off of it. Uh, water's linking in from the top floor down to the bottom apartments. Nothing's being done. And we continually filed complaints through the landlord. Because that's his building.
Right.
It should be his responsibility to keep it up to code.
Well, you come to the right place then.
And it's, I've been dealing with that for a year. And nothing's being done. Nothing. Cracks in the ceilings, mold in one of my, two of my kids' bedroom. Floorboards up on the second floor. You feel yourself going through it.
Our borough manager can take a look at it. Like, I, I didn't know Rex was on vacation this week. So, you know, we may not be able to get a whole lot of confirmation with the balling week.
Okay.
Someone he takes a look at it and, and, you know, then you get on Rex's case and see what we can do.
Yeah, because like I said, I have six.
A number that you can reach back?
Uh, yes. I'll give you mine and my wife's number. 717-437-4819.
4819?
Yes. And then my wife's is 717-247-9600.
90?
Angelio. All right, thank you.
Someone can get back?
All right, thank you.
May I speak one more time, please?
Absolutely.
Could you speak, please speak with Mr. Zimmerman? Because the last time he's texted me that there was no evidence of a business within that building, okay? Would you let him, please be aware that I have several more pictures to identify the fact that there's something a little ugly going on, okay? And that then he can then make that decision. One other question. Isn't that the zoning officer's decision to, to make that determination whether that's a commercial business or residential, you know, in a residential area? That's not, that's not Mr. Zimmerman's decision, is that correct?
It's not that he can make the decision. So she already be in the zoning book about whether it's commercial or residential or whatever.
Yeah, that's what I was also thinking. But you're trying to get the proof to whether or not he's running an illegal business or whatever, which we all know he is. Now, I'm just, I just think what, what needs to be done is that I can, we can reintroduce this a little bit more clearly to him and whoever needs it more clearly so they can look at, so that you can make a better determination. That's, that's all. Okay?
Anyone else? Okay. We'll accept a motion to, okay, the consent agenda. Anything on there? Anybody want to pull it out?
I'll make the motion. Accept the agenda.
Motion's been made. Second. Motion property second. All those in favor, give your consent, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carries. Borough manager's report.
I have a few things. The first thing is the Valley Street repository building that we put a bid in on. I talked to the county today. That should be approved for us by the end of August. No later than August 26th. So we will get, control that building around August 26th. The second thing is to remind everybody the pool is closing August 15th for the summer. All the kids are going back. I should say lifeguards, young adults are going back to college and high school. The third thing, which isn't on here, is we need to vote for a note, approve a notice to proceed with contract 2020 West Water Street Sidewalk Replacement. The DLI is coordinating. So we need to vote to notice to proceed. You've already approved the bid, and it's been awarded. Now it's a notice to proceed.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made. Property second, proceed. Question? All those in favor, give your consent, say an aye.
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 And that's all I had, sir.
Did you want to knock, but it's all closed here?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, I just didn't.
Tax names, you are. Hey, if you, if, you don't have to, but if you, if you people want to leave, I mean, you're, you're welcome to leave or you're welcome to stay for the balance of the meeting. It's up to you, Lance.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, folks. Thank you. Okay.
Um, you'll notice that on the tables, I got this a little late. It's the tax exonerations. Ms. Anawal asked me to present them. They just need a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion and we approve the tax exoneration.
Second.
Motion's been made. Property second. Approve the exonerations. Questions? All those in favor, give your consent, say an aye.
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 Aye. So carries. Fire chief.
Thank you. For the month of July, the fire department responded to 26 incidents. Three rebuilding fires with minor damage. We had a cooking fire, one brush, two brush fires, six medical assistance, two motor vehicle accidents with injuries, two with a triad where we had victims killed in the vehicle. We had a water rescue search, and we're still continuing that for the past week. We've been going down in Mufflin. There's some kind of incident down there with a search for a body, which we haven't found yet. And we'll continue to assist until the job gets completed. Uh, we had a carbon monoxide incident, one police assess, public service, two standby assignments for other departments, and six automatic alarms. In the month of July, we finished up our 26-hour water rescue class. Also, we're in the process now of going through a 46-hour vehicle rescue class, which is about half finished. And I also have a group of guys that just enrolled in a essentials class, which are just now getting into the firefighting. And they're starting the first of their 180 somehow as a training. So we've been busy, and things are going well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Police chief.
Uh, July statistics, false service with 595, 66 traffic citations were issued, 22 non-traffic handwritten warnings, 411 meter tickets, and 95 street maintenance tickets. Uh, it's past Tuesday, August 3rd, we had our national night out at Fish Park in Dairy Township. That was combined event with regional and Grandville PD. Great event with probably hundreds in attendance. I won't give them exact count, but, we'd like to thank all the local businesses, participants, organizations who donated to the event or supported with their attendance. And the list is too long for me to mention everybody here, but there were over 75 sponsors and different organizations that helped with the event. So that is listed on our Facebook page, which will list there all the participants and businesses and so forth. So if anyone's interested in looking at that. Uh, we do have our body cameras now. They're in use. Started about two weeks ago. So the officers will be wearing body cameras at all times while they're on patrol. So getting that program up and running. That's all I have for now.
Chief, are they, are they still putting the street sweeper tickets out?
Yeah.
When they get an opportunity? Okay. Okay.
Yeah, they're still doing that. But we don't until street sweeping ends, which is in November.
Yeah, okay. Rec four, no four. I think, I know, I think it's interested in being on the rec four.
Mary keeps mentioning someone, but she hasn't.
Yeah, same brand, all about the same person.
Is it? Okay.
I still have it on social media and are trying to get.
Okay, okay.
Did you get the text I sent to you with the picture?
Okay. Okay, borough's legislature.
Well, we do have one ordinance that was advertised for adoption. It has to do with the two pension plans, the non-uniform, which is like the office people and the police pension plan. This was kind of a requirement of Pennsylvania municipal retirement systems that we update our ordinance. We use a lot of language that they provided, and they just asked us to update our, our pension plan ordinances, I guess to be in compliance with whatever technical laws they have to follow.
Do we need to make any motions on that?
Just, yeah, motion, motion to approve the ordinance, amending the chapter 36 pensions.
Okay, need a motion.
I'll make the motion that we just approved the, the chapter 36 for the pension ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Motion's been made. Property second. Questions? All those in favor, give your consent, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carries. On finish the new business. Mufflin County Municipal Authority appointment. We need to put three people in the municipal water authority.
Have we advertised this?
I, I thought that it was, hadn't it been advertised?
Um, it was advertised.
I know some, I know some people put some in.
But they turned them into the county. They didn't turn any in here. But that's been a while ago.
That's been, I don't think it was recent. That's why I wasn't there.
Make motions. Jones Marker for one year, and Barry Bartha for three year, and Jeff Rocker for five year.
Did anybody else apply?
I don't know.
Because I, I mean, I didn't get anything on these guys, an application or anything.
I don't know.
Then we do it just like we would the municipal authority now?
Yeah, what's the matter with, yeah, they're on there now. We figured that's, they turned in paperwork. Didn't they turn paperwork?
Jones Marker, Jones Marker told me he could been turned in.
I think all of them did.
Yeah.
I didn't see that.
Surely they did.
Pretty sure Jeff Rocker did.
Yeah.
I didn't see them.
Think they know what they're doing.
Well, we're gonna get three people in here. At least till the end of the year.
Right. But if nobody else in the community knows that it's available.
Well, do you have other nominations, other notices?
Everybody's, I, what I'm saying is we haven't put it out there for people to know that's where they come and get an application, how they do this process.
I thought that was already a done deal.
I thought it was, too.
I'm pretty sure they already, didn't they turn paperwork in? They wanted to be on that?
If they, if they did, they, they turned them into Diana, or I should say, previous borough manager. But I don't believe they turned them into her. I think they turned everything into the county. Like, we, at that time, I think my understanding from the conversation was they didn't know where to turn them in at. So she instructed them to turn them into the county. Because she wasn't sure how, yeah, I don't know. Because she wasn't sure if they picked them up.
They weren't pretty happy.
Yeah. I don't know. I wasn't part of that conversation.
Well, then advertise it for next meeting.
Advertise it?
And this one you just handed me here? Do they have to vote on this?
Yeah, it's for the police advisory board.
Oh.
Uh, Mr. Tipping put his name in. I guess they, they need someone to fill that position. We just got it.
So it's Mr. Tipping.
Uh, for police advisory board.
Oh, but who?
Uh, Jim Tipping.
Oh, he's the.
Cleaning. He doesn't clean like that.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's an occasion here in his resume.
Oh, do we need people on there?
Yes, they do. And he's willing to volunteer his time. And he's a reactive.
Yeah, he's reactive.
I guess in his, what, what.
You say there are open?
There are.
Yeah.
At least one of them.
The police advisory board.
I guess the mayor spoke to him and asked him if he'd be interested because I guess.
She mentioned it at the last meeting.
Yeah, last meeting, she mentioned it. He was very active in his previous community with the fire company.
Was this advertised?
I don't believe it was adverti-, well, she talked about it. We didn't know.
What's that?
My guess would be no.
They say no.
Who advertised it?
Yeah.
Yes. You guys only need quarterly anyway.
Okay.
I'll get this on social media.
Okay. Anything else under on face or new business?
Rest of the executive session.
Anyone have any public comments? Other than what we've been going through? Okay, if not, we're gonna adjourn and go into executive session. Executive session, call the meeting back to order.
First thing I'd like to discuss is Jennifer Miller's resignation as the deputy borough manager slash treasurer for the borough of Rose Town. We would like to take this opportunity to thank Jennifer for her seven years of extremely hard work for the citizens of this town. I can tell you for my five months that I've been here that we were very, very lucky to have her for that timeframe. I don't think the borough would be in the condition it is right now if it wasn't for Jen, covering all the positions that she's covered in her tenure here. She's worked up from an intern all the way to the deputy borough manager, treasurer, and now she's moving on to other great things. So with that, I'd like to say thank you, Jen, for your time and your hard work, and we wish you the best of luck in the future endeavors.
Yes, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
It's okay. I'd like to make a motion that we bid the workman position. And if no one accepts that bid, in 10 days, we advertise that position outside the borough.
Motion made, property second. Questions? All those in favor, give your consent, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carries.
I'd like to make a motion that we fill the clerk secretary position in the refuse
Second.
Motion made, property second. Questions? All those in favor, give your consent, say an aye.
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 Aye. So carries.
Make a motion that we fill the secretary to the borough manager full-time position.
Second.
Motion made, property second. Questions? All those in favor, give your consent, say an aye.
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 Aye. So carries.
And I'd also like to make a motion that we hire, post a full-time code officer position for hiring.
Second. Second.
Motion made, property second. Questions? All those in favor, give your consent, say an aye.
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 I'd also like to make a motion to hire a consultant to fill the void with Jen. If need be, at $25 an hour as needed.
I'll second.
Motion made, property second. Questions? All those in favor, give your consent, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Anything else?
Are we gonna post Jen's position or not?
Oh, wait. Didn't I say that? Make the motion to advertise the work, for our manager treasurer position? I'm sorry. Skip right over that.
Second.
Motion made, property second. Questions? All those in favor, give your consent, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Anybody else have anything they want to discuss before council? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.